Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 7th, 2017 regular meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Please join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson?
Present.
Alderman Beadie?
Present.
Alderman Bevan?
Here.
Alderman Beer?
Here.
Alderman Casey?
Here.
Alderman Germain?
Here.
Alderman Genetasio?
Here.
Alderman Golden?
Alderman Grant?
Here.
Alderman Hardiman?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Veccharelli?
Here.
Alderman Vitro?
Here.
Alderman Vitale?
Here.
Thirteen present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have thirteen present. We do have a quorum. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to address the board can do so at this time. Please state your name and address for the record.
Christine Angeli. I'm not a Milford resident. Twenty-four, Browns Lane, Old Lime, Connecticut, but I am the Director of the Public Library. Per Alderman Smith's recommendation, he thought I should come up here and just say a few words about something that is on the agenda this evening, and it is the fact that the library would like to apply for a state library construction grant. The purpose of the grant is to expand our children's department and to add two small meeting spaces on our upper level. Given the state of the state budget, I'm not sure of the feasibility of or the success of the grant, but it is something that we've been talking about with the library board and our library building committee for some time. The expansion of the children's department would more than double the space, allowing our book stacks to be ADA compliant, allowing for space for different age groups, including, for older children, early literacy activities, and technology. And the addition of the two small meeting spaces on the upper level is something that our patrons have been requesting almost on a daily basis. A place for small businessmen to meet, business people to meet together, students to study together. So that is the purpose of the grant application that's in your packet tonight. Okay? Any questions?
Anyone else wishing to address the board can do so at this time? Want to wait through Kim?
Good evening. My name is Kim Rose, and I live at 292 Nagatuck Avenue in Milford. First item is in support of the library grant. Should there be an appetite and a budget in Hartford? I most certainly would work with my legislators and colleagues to support that grant. What I'm standing here also before you tonight is just to thank the mayor and the ordinance committee in a bipartisan way. I just watched them pass through an ordinance that's coming before your full board tonight that is enacting SB 918, which was an act concerning the municipal property tax exemption for Gold Star parents and spouses. As a member, eight years of the Veterans Committee, I was a proud co-sponsor of the bill. I supported it in the legislature, and I'd like to just thank you and hope that you'll all support that and enact that ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, I guess for the last month, or maybe a little longer, there's been a lot of noise level across the Husatonic in Stratford. The loud music from a restaurant has been bothering a lot of people on the Devon side. And a lot of, I know a few Aldermen have been getting crazy calls about, from this, especially one person has been going out of her mind because the music was so loud. I got ahold of the owner, and we talked, and I told him what we were looking for, a noise barrier, before we had to go through the state or the city of Stratford, which has a noise ordinance. And then I went back to him, and he put the noise, he put up the sound barrier. So, oh, he did. I was there, and I want to tell you something. Right, do you hear me speaking now? That's the loud, loudest it gets from that part of the Husatonic to Devon. Just to let you know. So I want to thank everybody that was involved in trying to get this. I know a lot of the Aldermen were going a little crazy, and I will be in touch with the person, Debbie Ann Levanti, who lives in Devon, and let her know that all this has been taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hardiman. Anyone else wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number Three, consideration of minutes.
Are we going to do the ordinance with Frank first?
No. No, we do that. Right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on July 10th, 2017.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all, oop, Ellen, your microphone is on, sorry. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, we do not have a special organization meeting to consider. Item number five, Chairman's Report. I just have an announcement to make here for the, VFW is having a Sunday breakfast, eggs or pancakes, sausage or bacon, home fries, toast, juice, or coffee, 11:00 a.m. this coming Sunday, 8:00 to 11:00. Just wanted to make that announcement. Hope everybody's enjoying their summer and looking forward to the annual Milford Oyster Festival in two more weeks. I know everybody enjoys that type of operation. And next thing we have is the Mayor's Report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will follow up on Chairman Vitro's message about the Milford Oyster Festival this August 19th, the largest single-day event in the state of Connecticut, come one, come all. Over 50,000 people descending on our downtown. My favorite event. I think that Alderman Bevan will back me up on this one because I believe he's still the Chair of the Harbor Committee and the Oyster Festival Canoe-Kayak Outrigger and Sup Cup Race. Bright and early in the morning, bring your kayaks, bring your canoes, get down there and get ready to race. Other than that, we have a pretty light agenda this evening. I respectfully request your consideration and action on those items listed in the Agenda 8A through 8C. I'm happy to answer any questions as they come up. Happy summer.
Mr. Chair? Alderman Vitale? Just to piggyback on what the mayor said, it's also Friday night to go Oyster Fest from 6:00 to 10:00. So that's a kind of, oh, Oyster Eve. So that's a good event also. So the weekend will be covered. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, on the item number seven, we have no unfinished business. Moving on to item number eight, new business, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 8A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve pursuant to Article 3, Section 16 of the Charter of the City of Milford and Board of Aldermen, approval request for the appointment of Nancy Austin from 14 Village Road to complete an interim term on the Planning and Zoning Board representing the 4th District. Richard Lutz, letter of resignation attached, term expiring 12/31/17.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Vitale? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sure Ms. Austin is well-qualified, but there is no resume attached to the agenda, so we don't know any background, but I'm sure everything is fine.
And, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale, the tradition has been that we submit a name that the district chooses. We took a similar position to this for any of the elected boards, and we do, you know, list the contact information, but the elected boards, we have not traditionally included the resume for an appointment by the district, but I will in the future if that's something the board has the pleasure of.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chair, since there is no resume, could we invite Ms. Austin up to the podium and just give some background?
Sure. Well, Ms. Austin is here. Ms. Austin, are you okay to join us up at the podium?
Hi. I'm Nancy Austin. I do live at 14 Village Road. I am born and raised here in Milford, Connecticut, for all 42 years of my life outside of college, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions or...
Ask the question. Thank you.
I'll vouch for my neighbor as well.
Thank you, Nancy. Motion has been made and seconded, and there's no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we will ask a newly confirmed zoning commission member to come up from the auditorium to get sworn in by our city clerk.
Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you uphold your duties and responsibilities as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board for the City of Milford to the best of your ability, so help you God, under the pain or penalty for perjury or false statement?
Up under 8B, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 8B.
I move to approve the request for the attached resolution regarding a grant application for the consolidating, consolidated housing and community development plan.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request submitting the attached application for the State Public Library Construction Grant, FY 2017, 2018, and to authorize the mayor, the finance director, and the library director to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to apply for and accept said grant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Frank Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to go on the record in support of the application for this. Our library director, who stayed over here from her home in Old Lime, to testify tonight says there are some limited funds that are available that, at this very difficult budget season, about $1.7 million worth of monies that can be accessed through the Connecticut Library Construction Grant. And as Chris Angeli reminds me, there's a Type 1 and Type 2 grant. One is kind of a structural and essential building application, and a Type 2, which would be more along the lines of what Chris had mentioned, which is for expansion of our children's department and installing some much-needed space in our library board. We have impaneled a small committee in the library board, as Alderman Grant and I know, as liaisons, who have been working very diligently to make the most efficient use of our space. So I would like to encourage my colleagues to support this application and hopefully have access to the funds we need to complete this project with some money from the state for a change. Would be greatly appreciated by all of the users of the Milford Public Library and the citizens of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Any more discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Anderson?
So a question for Ms. Angeli, if I could, through you. Good evening. To the best of your recollection, has the City of Milford applied for this type of funding in the past? And how do you regard the competitive nature of our application? Are there going to be a number of cities and towns that are new to be considered under the grants, or is it, how would we stack up?
Funds are very limited. At this point in time, with the uncertainty of the state budget, the State Library Board is stating that there's $1.7 million available for Category 1 and Category 2 funding. Category 1 funding is for basically new construction, emergency construction, and distressed communities. That's 80% of the funding. So that leaves about $340,000 available for state construction funds for Category 2 grants. I do know that there were 15 other communities that have expressed interest in applying for a grant. I do not know how many of those were Category 1 or Category 2, but those 15 grants did greatly exceed $1.7 million. So, you know, I think it's, we put our application in and see what we can get. I don't anticipate there being construction funding available in the future, so this might be our last chance to get some state funds to improve the library building.
It absolutely is. Best of luck with the application, and it definitely is worthwhile to get it into the hopper. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, on the agenda is number 10, Budget Memo Transfers. Consideration of Budget Memo Transfer 11 and 12, Alderman Veccharelli.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Budget Memo Transfer Number 11 and 12, Fund 10, FY 17, and Transfers Number 1 and Number 2, Funds 10, FY 18.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 11, moving on to refunds, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 11A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the refunds in the amount of $13,142.44.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number 11, moving on to refunds, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 11A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the refunds in the amount of $13,142.44.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is reports of standing committees. Are there any reports of standing committees? Alderman Germain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. And as a member of the Public Works Committee, I just want to bring up a discussion on the LED lighting proposed for Milford. And just to find out where we're at with it, I think it's great that we're moving in that direction, LED lighting, to replace our current lighting. And there was some, quite a bit of concern in the last couple of meetings on the color of lighting. There was a 4,000 Kelvin that was proposed, and apparently there was a lot of possible health issues with that. So my concern is to address that, and how do we get approved for a lesser Kelvin, maybe a 3,000 Kelvin? And I just wanted to open that up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Germain, we have discussed this a couple times. One of the things that I had suggested that this board do is take a tour. It's not available yet. I just confirmed with our liaison to UI that they will have different types of LED lights available at the substation off of Bridgeport Ave for people to go and visit. They'll even give a tour with UI representatives there to kind of talk about the different color temperatures that are out there. At this point, the technology that UI has does not allow for both 4,000 and 3,000. It's 16 to 18 months away. My suggestion is that the Public Works Committee notice a meeting at this facility some evening when those lights would be available. I'll help to coordinate and arrange for the visit with UI. Towards the end of this month, according to our UI liaison, you know, they'll have those different light colors available.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Germain?
Just want to follow up through you, Mr. Chairman. So the 4,000 Kelvin, I know there was an issue with getting approval. Is that, can you explain how that's working? 4,000 is approved now, and if we had to wait for a different color, it'd be a much longer timeframe?
Essentially, the 4,000 K, or Kelvin, which is the color temperature of these LEDs, is the same bulb as the 3,000 K. It just has a phosphorus coating on it. At this point, UI does not have the technology, even though the technology exists, to account for the billing component of both 4,000 and 3,000. Their system is calibrated just for the 4,000 at this point. It's going to be about a year and a half before they're going to be able to adjust their system to account for both, either or. They are installing these seven-node components onto the lights so that into the future, they'll be able to control the color temperature, similar to what CLMP or Eversource does in other communities, where they have a restrictor on the lights and adjusts the actual color temperature. But we have taken inventory of all of the lights that we have across the city. We've looked at how many kilowatts we want, or the kilowatt equivalent for both industrial areas, residential areas. It is going to be something that saves us significant money. It's also something that's going to be a huge home run for the environment. There's going to be a lot less of a carbon footprint when we switch to this. Those municipalities that have the option of the 3,000 K or the 4,000 K, 13 out of the 14 nationwide still go with the 4,000 K just because it's the industry standard. There's a whole other host of environmental benefits with the 4,000 K. You know, there was that one study, and I'm happy to discuss that at some point. I know that we've had conversations about it in the past, both at this meeting and offline, about why, you know, there are pros and cons to each of them. But at this point, and probably for the next 16 to 18 months, UI is just offering the 4,000.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor, I just, on this discussion, I mean, there are definitely benefits both ways with the 4K versus the 3K. And, I mean, you mentioned environmental reasons, and, you know, the carbon footprint will be helpful, but environmental as well, and streetlights in general impact animals. I mean, they do. And the 4,000 has a higher blue light, which mimics daylight, and also impacts the environment in a negative way. Whereas the 3,000 is, especially for streetlights, recommended by the AMA to not above, go above 3,000. When would we be locked in to the 4,000 without having a discussion to potentially lower it, or wait for the one and a half years?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Grant, it's not necessarily recommended. There was a study that was done actually by UConn professors or UConn doctors to look at LED lights in general and the different effects to circadian rhythms, you know, for 4,000, for 3,000. If you look at a person's exposure to LED lights, less than, you know, 1/10th of 1% comes from streetlights. 99% of people's exposure comes from interior lights that they experience either at their homes or when they go to work. That, you know, that said, as you know, Alderman Germain, they've already been installed, the Borough Woodmont, which has a separate program from the City of Milford, you know, that's part of their municipal work as a borough. The Borough already moved forward and installed LED lights in that section of Woodmont. Most other municipalities in the UI territory, North Haven, Stratford, Bridgeport, New Haven's separate because they actually own their own streetlights, have already installed the LED lights. We are up, we're holding off to find out a little bit more in terms of research, but it would be available, I think, pretty soon. East Haven just had theirs installed, so...
Alderman Veccharelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, is there a savings in using the 3,000 K over the, say, 4,000 K?
Well, at this point, for UI, in the 17 towns in the UI territory, it's not available. But the 3,000 K do have less of a savings, both from an environmental standpoint and an actual monetary savings. It's about 20% less. And again, there's different versions depending on the brand and the make and the model of the 3,000 K light versus the 4,000 K light, but it's generally 20% to 25% less energy-efficient than the 4,000. And it has a lot to do with, you know, how much kilowatts are being pumped out, too. There's a whole bunch of different, you know, pros and cons. Alderman Grant mentioned the actual color of the light. One has, you know, the 3,000 has a little bit warmer feel to it. It's a little bit more of a yellowish tinge. The present, current, high-sodium lights that we have right now, they're even more of a warm, yellowish light than the brighter light, the brighter, whiter light that we talked about that the 4,000 K is, even though it may have, you know, the animals and the critters don't like it as much. It is better from a public safety standpoint. Police officers, public safety folks have more of an appreciation for that type of light. One of the things that, you know, people don't realize is if you take out your iPhone or your Samsung Galaxy, or you're watching an LED TV, or you have a laptop computer or an iPad, those have, usually, the factory settings are 7,000 K, so twice the color temperature of a light from outside. The other thing that the utility companies do have more of the ability to do is actually focus the light, put the blinders on either side of the streetlights when they install these LED. They're more focused. They don't have as much spill-over effect as the... They don't have as much spill-over effect as the current high-sodium conventional lights that we have right now.
Alderman Germain.
Just to comment, the mayor brought up that Woodmont has replaced their lights, and it is a 4,000, I believe it's a 4,000 Kelvin. And it is a bright, white light, so if anybody wants to see it. And it is a nice light, except, you know, I'm glad it's not in front of my house, but if it was in front of my house, I don't know what I'd do. But it's a bright light, and sometimes it's almost blinding, so...
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, through you to the mayor. Is there uniformity in conforming that if we go with 3,000, the whole city has to do it, or 4,000, the whole city has to do it? Or can we design these for individual neighborhoods to, as being in front of somebody's house or something, so there's not a mishmash of them? What is the designs? We all have to go in with one, either 3,000 or the 4,000 if they do, and if they're able to handle it?
At this point, again, the 3,000 is not available for UI towns. The 4,000 that is available, the city, UI, have the ability to go neighborhood by neighborhood, street by street, pole by pole, and choose or select, and our Public Works Department has done this with our GAS department, the actual kilowatt output that each of the lights have, so the brightness of these lights. Again, the kilowatt is different from the Kelvin. The color temperature is different from the brightness. But I assume that in 16, 18 months, when both are available for UI, both come online, we'd be available to have each. Perhaps industrial areas would have a different color temperature than residential areas. Again, that's speculated into the future because at this point, they're not available. But my, you know, initial conversations with UI, I say nothing that we couldn't have both.
If we can individualize within neighborhoods, or that would be fantastic. But the other point would be that if we go with a 4,000 K, which emits more light, do we need as many lights on the street? Do we cut back because of the brightness of it all, and hopefully eliminate, or maybe not get near a house, in front of a house, and, you know, design our own specifications as to whether they're polled?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Vitale. One of the things we did do was, in internal audit, our Public Works and our GAS, I mean, they sat down with UI, went light pole by light pole, adjusting the brightness of each light, scaling it back to a lower kilowatt. That's where the energy savings comes in. That's how we're saving, you know, a quarter, over a quarter million dollars a year in energy savings, is because we are reducing pole by pole the kilowatt output that each light is required to have, to give us a similar light output that we presently have with the high sodium. So they have looked at all of those different poles to adjust what is reasonable, what's the equivalent of what we have right now. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? One more time, Mr. Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we're on the topic of sustainability, a while back, we had voted, this board had voted on solar panels to be installed on a bunch of the buildings. Can you give us an update on that? Because I don't think there's any progress in that area.
The first building that we're going to do is probably going to be the library. We are very close. As you know, we've recently replaced the roof on the library. The thing that we're waiting for before we can greenlight the installation of the solar panels or the PV panels is the HVAC units. We, those should be done full and final very, very soon. We're also looking at some other buildings that we're re-roofing, namely, the Parsons Government Center. We don't have a ZREC for that yet, but that's something that's, we're looking to apply for. We do have a ZREC for the library. We do have a ZREC for our sewage treatment plant. Those are the two that we had applied for. And as soon as we finish some upgrades at the sewer treatment plant, and as soon as we install the HVAC units at the library, we are going to bring those PV units online and get the benefits. Most of the grants that came before this board, not grants, most of the state incentives that came before this board for PV installation had to do with the schools, because the city actually owns the school buildings, the eight elementary schools, the 14 schools in general that we have. They are moving forward on all of those installation projects as we speak. There were four elementary school roofs that were re-roofed last summer, another four that were re-roofed this summer. Not all of them have PV installations, because some of them, the square footage is just not enough. But also, Harborside was done last summer. East Shore was done four years ago, five years ago, and West Shore is under progress right now. They should be done by September 2018. So all of those are going to have brand-new roofs. All of them are going to be available for PV installations. All those contracts that you had with the Board of Education should be coming online
Agenda Item 12A, Alderman Frank Smith, Report of Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The ordinance committee of the Board of Alderman met earlier this evening and have to consider and have voted unanimously to recommend here to the full board an ordinance establishing Chapter 20.5 Taxation, Section 20.5-14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Milford, exemption for Gold Star parents and spouses. This is an ordinance that allows exemption for those people whose children or spouses were killed in service to this country, hence the Gold Star designation. This was a, this is an ordinance that is enabled by legislation that was signed by the governor earlier this year and was co-sponsored by our state representative in the House, Kim Rose, in the 118th. As I said, we have, we have recommended it to the full board. It does have certain means tests. There are certain qualifications for eligibility, but I think it is a, obviously, the very least that the city could do to, for our Gold Star families in the City of Milford. And I'd like to present that to the full board as a motion, please.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a recommended revision? There's a Scrivener's error. If you look at the last sentence of subsection A, where it says, "Each application shall include a copy of such veteran's federal income tax return." My recommendation would be to delete the word veterans and supplant it with the following phrase: "Such parents or surviving spouses' federal income tax return." And if you could make that in the form of an amendment.
Mr. Chairman, in view of the editorial note the mayor had just provided, I would like to amend our motion from the ordinance committee to reflect that language, replacing the, what section is that in, Mr. Mayor?
Subsection A, the last sentence.
Okay, yeah. Shall include a copy of such veteran's federal income tax return to, was it Gold Star, parents and spouses, in replace of the term veterans. And I'd like to amend the original motion to reflect that language.
On the amendment, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, how many potential Gold Star recipients are there in Milford?
Mr. Chairman, through you. I don't think this is going to have much of a fiscal impact, thankfully. The Pearson family, I know, just moved out. Corporal Jordan Pearson, you know, who we have honored for his heroism and bravery. You know, they've recently relocated to be with their youngest son, who's off at college. But other than that, I don't know of any.
Well, support of the ordinance, but I just wanted, for information's sake, as to how many. Hopefully, we don't have any, and we won't be getting any. That'll be a plus, you know, but I'd like to help them out as much as possible. And Jordan, being a student of mine at Live Oaks years ago, you know, they went through an ordeal. So, thank you.
Alderman Casey.
Thank you. Through you. I think I understand the statute or the ordinance. Just wanted to clarify that. This allows, if the means test is satisfied, to reduce the assessment by $10,000. So if the property is worth a hundred, it would go down to 90, then the taxes would be applied as appropriate under the mill rate. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Amendment passes unanimously. On the original motion? Any more discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there any other reports of standing committees? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 13, Reports Of Special Committees. Any reports of any special committees? Seeing none? Is there, can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.